There you go.
Oh, you were the problem.
My problem, yes.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Your wishes, moved by Brailer, supported by DeRosa. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Before we get to public comment, I'll just give a little preface. This meeting will be not have any action items, and I won't support anything that involves action. We're going to have discussion and input. A little less formal, we're going to have input from the board and from the audience. And we're discussing the financial condition of the county and the expenditure side versus the revenue side, which are approaching an imbalance. In terms of actual dollars and cents, we'll probably not get into that. Save that for another day. We're looking at the broad picture. We're looking at advising the next board as some opportunities or some direction they might have and understanding that we can't direct what the next board is going to do. Any action that we would take could be undone, and we have to always remember that. We're only in an advisement position here. So, given that, I'd like to open the opportunity for limited public comment. There will be a second public comment session at the end of this meeting. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Jim Ruff, and I'm a property owner and resident of Windsor Township. Thank you for allowing me the time to share some thoughts and possible recommendations to you. Since the millage referendum has not passed, it is imperative that obviously the commission and the administration take the next best steps. While campaigning and listening to voters and going to various commission, township, and village meetings, it's become apparent that each unit of government within the county wrestles with a similar issue. How best to pay for the services it provides its residents? Within the county, each unit of government works with other units to provide these services. There are disagreements within each unit as to how much they financially contribute and receive for these services. The rising costs, the inflation, so on, have resulted in a greater awareness and I believe a greater level of conflict within the townships and in the county itself. For example, Benton Township had a multi-year contract with the city of Potterville for fire and EMS services. A significant majority of these services are provided within the city, yet the contract does not cover these costs or even reflect the percentage of the costs when compared to the rest of the township. Therefore, it appears that the township residents residing outside the city are having to financially support the services provided to the city and that other services may suffer because of it. I believe another example is the contract for the sheriff's services provided to Delta Township. From the budget, it appears the county is not being completely reimbursed for the direct costs of these committed services to the tune of one and a half million dollars per year. And that probably does not include the indirect costs. When I attended township meetings, I would hear that the sheriff's officers responded to, let's say, 70 calls a month in Benton Township, while in comparison, the officers in Delta Township responded to maybe 90 calls a day. Huge difference. Also, the indirect costs of liability insurance, administration, personnel, facility maintenance, the prosecuting attorney's office, or the courts are not included in that. During the referendum, these links were well made by the prosecutor and the court administration, but not fully defined or quantified. For example, if for every 100 sheriff calls, 10 have to be referred to the prosecutor, and out of these 10, of six or seven have to be referred to the court, sent to court, these resulting costs should be quantified and recognized, especially since 65% of the budget goes toward this family of services. Therefore, the contracts for services should be analyzed, quantified, and evaluated on an ongoing basis in order to prepare for the next contract. It appears that revenues received from other townships are supporting the contracted services in Delta Township. I mean, does some of the townships that some of the different commissioners relate to, do they really use a lot of the services that the county provides? And I know that's contested within Delta Township with that idea because they generate a lot of tax revenue. Yet, every township is establishing tax revenue and contributes tax revenue, and the appearance of inequity can be evident. So while many of the taxpayers may benefit from the commercial districts in Delta, I would argue that the township should pay for these direct and indirect services in their entirety. Why should the residents of townships that may be predominantly farming support another township? To me, it seems unfair. In my years with the city of Lansing, we went through the same types of things. I was, you know, I was, our departments were cut short during a couple of different occasions. And as a revenue-producing department, we had to help financially support the non-revenue-producing departments that I used on a proportional basis, such as personnel, finance, legal, and building maintenance. So my fees had to be adjusted accordingly. Therefore, while it was good to go through the process of the millage ballot, I believe now the county services need to be prioritized and quantified by township with the current base of 5.2-plus mills of revenue. Some townships receive planning services while others provide their own, but all use the clerk's office, register of deeds, recycling, et cetera. A portion of the sheriff, the prosecutor, and courts. Facilities, maintenance, and capital improvements, you can't leave those out of those costs. Then an actual budget can be developed accordingly instead of these continuation budgets, and all the contracts for services be paid in full, including the relative services. The contract should be not be for more than three years and the numbers evaluated constantly. There is a cost of service. If this was a business, you'd be evaluating those costs constantly. Also, the county will need to continue to push the state for helping cover the costs of unfunded mandates while assembling and marketing available industrial and commercially viable properties to help drive increased property tax revenue while focusing upon the essentials. While you would not be able to do this in this, in the remaining month of the current commission body, you can help set the stage to promote an approach that will provide excellent basic services to every township and help create the expectation that every cost associated to providing an additional service is accounted and paid for by the partners within the county. And if additional taxes on the entire county through an increase in millage are necessary, whether for public safety or sinking fund, then you will have the groundwork to justify the proportional benefit and receiving a proportional benefit. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the commitments you all have made to serve our county and its residents.
Thank you. Comments, good insight on some things? Okay, next. And there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting also. All right, getting into this meeting. The format will be pretty simple. I've put together a list of some things that I think we need to be looking at and considering. And I would expect that some of you have some ideas. I think it's critical to understand again that we're not making the policy. We're only offering things to study for the next board. It's also important to realize that we do have an existing budget that goes until next fall, and it is balanced. But just by a little bit, we only have a very small fund balance carryover. So, and I suspect that the next board will have activities that are necessary for adjusting budgets early in their cycle. The budget process generally starts in the spring and in the early summer, at which time we're planning for the following year's budget. And the next board will probably have some challenges, and they will be starting the process maybe a little earlier than usual. Would you suspect that, Melissa? What about the budget process next year? What are you anticipating?
I anticipate that it will probably be significantly more intensive than it has been in prior years. Much more scrutiny will be done from every department across the board. So, when departments submit their budgets, we will likely have a lot more questions about what are these costs? What has increased, what has changed? And then, how do we go forward?
Yeah, and from a high level, you know, we see possible cuts that can happen. But I'll assure you that this moment, all the department heads here at the county are looking at their own operations. And they're looking for places that they can do some savings. They're looking at services that aren't heavily used or may not be necessary. And I think during this process, it'll be important to engage with the department heads who really know the nuts and bolts and the fine points of their operations and interact with them, making sure that their voice is an important voice in this budget reduction cycle that they're going to have next year. And I think we, as a board, have always committed to that. We've always been, in my opinion, we've always been interactive with department heads. We've always taken their advisement to heart and followed their lead. We have an excellent team of department heads and administrators, and they know what they're doing. Frankly, it's sometimes not our place to micromanage, but it is our place to give broad direction. And there are going to be changes, and the department heads are going to be the first ones to give us some of that input for changes, I believe. I'll start out with, I guess I got a couple things. You want to add anything? Controller?
What I would like to say, if the new board or recommendation administration would make so that department heads have an idea and elected officials have an idea of what they need to do. If the new board is going to make cuts, they need to be defined as a dollar, which is very difficult to do at this county. Because if you give a percentage to one department, it's a lot larger for the sheriff, prosecutor, and courts than it is for the clerk or the treasurer or the drain commissioner or any other office. But you need to quantify it because they are not going to be able to make a cut until you tell them what you need. So that would be the work that our office would be doing. But we are not there today. I want to make that clear.
And you know, there'll be a lot of talk about mandated services versus unmandated services. And yes, constitutionally, there are things that a county has to do. But a lot of those things are, some of them are large, some of them are small. Some things entail dozens of employees, and other of those mandated services may only employ a portion of an FTE. So, and there are a lot of services that are not mandated and yet are a critical function. You know, we don't mandate our IT department whatsoever. We could say tomorrow, we don't need them because it's not mandated, yet everyone knows that we couldn't function without that. So there are services that are absolutely critical and yet not mandated. So this is a, this is a fine, delicate path to walk on. We have to maintain mandate, but we have to maintain critical services also. We learned some of that ins and outs during the COVID years when we had to scale back services. And we kind of learned which services were the ones that couldn't be scaled back because of their ubiquity within the whole county services and programs. So, again, we'll discuss that, and the new board will probably discuss those same things. Anybody else want to make an initial comment? Commissioner Augustine?
Maybe just a question, and I apologize, I got here a little late because of the roads, but the agenda states that we're going to discuss the budgets or the fiscal year budgets are on here. Are we looking, we're not going to discuss those budgets?
That was the topic, that you wanted to discuss what recommendations you would make for the new board, whether it would be '24, '25 reductions and recommendations for that or looking into the budget for '25, '26. So that, it was a vague agenda for that purpose.
Do we have, do we, I know, and I don't know if there's been other austerity measures, I guess I'll say, but I know, you know, the sheriff has made some changes with his shifts, you know. My understanding is, obviously, partially to improve the safety of our officers, so they're not working so much overtime. But I assume that there's a significant cost savings with that as well. Have we quantified that into the next, into this current budget that we're in to know? Because I think in order to know where the next board needs to go on the specific, on the current budget, if the idea is, and again, it's totally up to the next board. If I'm coming in, I'm looking at how can we, how can we save as much of that fund balance and not, you know, spend three and a half million dollars? I think was the final number, the use of the fund balance or around there. And, you know, we would have to make some cuts at that point in time. But what, I assume that three and a half million dollars is not the number now with the changes made to the sheriff's department. So to get that starting point would be an important piece, to know how much, if you wanted to say, and Blake said balance the budget. Obviously, we balanced the budget utilizing fund balance, but if we wanted to say have a balanced budget that didn't utilize or minimally utilized the fund balance, what, where would we need to be? And that's, I guess that's a question that I would have coming in, and I have today.
I'm not going to tell you that I have that answer today. When we discussed it, that's not what we were, the direction that we were going today. As far as the overtime cuts, it's going to make sure that they stay within the budget that was developed for overtime. Whereas last year, the overtime expenses had to come from the regular personnel expenses. So you're going over budget at a greater cost by paying over.
And that was a question I had too. Did we actually go, because obviously we had the personnel savings from not having the staff that we needed, but we had overtime to. So how far approximately, Connie, do you guys know that number? Approximately how net, how far over the budget we were when it comes to that?
Just overtime?
Well, just personnel in the sheriff's department.
I'll be honest, I'm not prepared to answer that question at the moment. I'll look into that information for you, though. Been trying to wrap up things for the end of the fiscal year already, and that just hasn't been finalized yet. So I'll look into it and get that information for you.
Well, and again, it's not, you know, I have the question, but it's more of a question for the new board coming in. It's going to ultimately decide if they're going to make, you know, make decisions. You know, I, you know, my overall, Blake, just an overall recommendation to the new board is into administration going forward is, you know, we have to look at what we can do to try to save money. So we have to look at our largest cost, which is personnel. We've got to, nobody wants to do that, but we've got to look at it. We've got to look at new hires. And, you know, I think that we need to, when we have positions that open, I think we have to have kind of a scale of this definitely needs to be replaced, this maybe needs to be replaced, you know, this probably doesn't need to be replaced, you know, that kind of thing. And I think that's one of the first, most important steps because we come into these ways and means meetings on a monthly basis, and we've got typically at least a half a dozen or so new positions that open due to retirements, due to, you know, job changes, things like that. So I think that's, you know, number one. If I'm coming in, that's one of the things that I would want to know and try to figure out where can we just not rehire people and save money? You know, obviously, that diminishes the services that are provided to the people of this county, which is what we told them would happen if the millage didn't pass. And that's an unfortunate reality, but that's where we're at. I mean, the county's got to live within its means and.
So I did run a report and the, for the sheriff, general road patrol, which is the impact the sheriff is making on that shift reduction. For last year, you were looking at about 160,000 over in overtime in terms of what, where they would have been. I didn't run that report, Terrance. Well, we will. Just, it wasn't intended for today, but yeah.
And I think your point, Commissioner Augustine, that even though we have a budget for the next budget year and that we have dollars on it and it is balanced, that the upcoming new board, because of their situation, that's not set in stone. They need to make some adjustments, and looking at personnel is a real important one. We could say today that we are going to freeze all hiring. That's, that makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? And yet there are certain positions that you don't and you shouldn't freeze. And so the idea of making a blanket statement, we're going to freeze all hiring, and then all of a sudden comes the position you have to have. For example, somebody in IT that runs our data protection. You know, you got to replace some positions. And so a blanket freeze would not be realistic, but.
No, I think that's where developing a scale of some sorts is going to be helpful to, you know, to make decisions scientifically, you know. And that's what you have to do. You have to decide again based on that, you know, based on, do you need that position? You know, one of the criteria that I would look at is when was the position created, you know? Doesn't mean necessarily that just because it was just created that it's something that we don't need to refill, but I think that that comes into play, so.
And a lot of positions in the county are internal transfers, you know? If you've got someone essentially stepping up, do you need to backfill that position that they're leaving? There's a lot of nuance to that when it comes to positions and when it comes to position policy.
Well, it's kind of what we spoke about before going into this, knowing that if the, you know, if the millage request didn't pass, that, you know, we were going to have to look at all the positions. We're going to have to figure out the mandated versus unmandated services. And I agree with you, just because it's not mandated doesn't mean that the board doesn't want to continue doing it. But I think that has to be pointed out. Each job needs to, and that's what we talked about. This is going to take a long time. It's going to take a lot of work to do to analyze each position and try to figure that out, how much of their job is mandated? Do they have any portion that's mandated, you know? And that's all the kind of information that the board's going to need to make personnel decisions, I think.
So the adopted budget for '24 was 7.268 for county road patrol only.
I see Ben, I think he's doing math.
On your phone.
Yes.
It's not a significant, it's not a significant amount of, I mean, net overage, but it's still overage, and that's the point, is that it's not.
That's just in the personnel. That was the total budget, but they didn't go over in their total budget. That's just swapping personnel for overtime, which is more costly, right?
Right, right.
And you're getting less service.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
I was here the first time in office when we went through the Great Recession, and that you were also here, Commissioner Mulder. And you know that we had to have extra meetings, and we had to make statements to the employees that was not to our liking, but it had to be done. And I think that's what we're headed for as well this time, and to be honest. But I know that Commissioner Brailer was chair of those times when it was so difficult, and we did go through cuts. I want to say that some of our departments have never been restored in staffing levels back to those times. And right now, in this time period that we're in, we also have different, we had to go through lists of mandated and then unmandated. I remember animal control is a big problem of how to staff it because it's actually mandated, folks, through the state of Michigan that we have animal control. So I know that this, we're heading for something really tough again. And we've been fortunate that we had that extra money, that the COVID dollars were there that got us through the last three, four years and the upper funds. But fact of the matter is, we're like all the other counties, cities, and everything else is local. And those dollars are gone, are already allocated and have to be spent during 2025. So that's what's going to happen. I've been here before.
Okay. I'm going to, I guess I'll start by reading off a couple things on my list and which is what we're here for, just to give some ideas. The first one on my list is the funding that we allocate to our outside agencies, which is significant. The two largest being the Board of Health and the second being community mental health. But down to the smaller agencies that receive funding, such as the Conservation District and MSU Extension. And we can go through a list of a dozen of these, and we make allocations annually in our budget. The agencies give us requests and perform services. Some of those allocations are required by statute to some degree, and others are not. All of those agencies perform services that are critical to the residents of our county. And because I mentioned that that's a place where we're going to have to look, it doesn't indicate that those agencies. Doesn't indicate that those agencies aren't important, but that's one that we're going to have to make some hard, take some hard looks at. So a lot of lobbying will come back from those agencies because they're under financial stress just as well. So spread the pain, I guess. And next one I'm looking at here is repealing some ordinances for animal control. Commissioner Pearl writes correct, there are some mandated statutory, statutory parts of animal control and there are others that aren't. Quite honestly, you know, when a, when a neighbor calls the county because they have a raccoon in their front yard that appears to be acting weirdly, they expect someone to come out there and take care of it. And or if a dog is running loose, you know, all of a sudden, that's the most important thing on someone's, someone's list. And they expect who's going to, who's going to deal with it? Well, we'd have to deal with it and we do deal with it and we're happy to deal with it. We have people that have, that devote their careers to this, this sort of thing. And they are a frontline with our residents. I mean, honestly, people see that activity regularly and appreciate it. But again, we have ordinance that's, that say we're going to do it. And we may have to look at repealing some of those and look at the scope of work that we do in that area. So again, that's something to look at. Veteran Services. We appreciate and respect our veterans and our veteran services do some great things. They help get people to the hospital, get them to the medical appointments. There's a, help them work through the, the morass of, of paperwork that's necessary to receive benefits and services. It's, it's, it's a great service that we offer. It's expensive and we'll have to look at it. Yes.
Just using veteran services as an example. How, how much of this is grant money that's the shell game of moving grant money around versus general revenue? And I'm not asking for numbers, just saying. To, to establish a true general fund savings, I understand what you're getting at and understand hard decisions are ahead of everybody. But I guess, go ahead.
We have one position that is full time that is funded through the general fund. We have a half time position that is funded through a VA grant through the state. So you're looking at one position.
Okay.
Which impacts that grant funding.
Of course.
Because that's a support role.
And I feel like that's going to be the, yeah, with.
You lose a position.
I use a general term of matching dollars, I guess, you know, when you, when you pull the plug on that, then you're, you're losing out on the grant funding, which is still taxpayer dollars as we all, all know. But, but the concept of the services that flow with it, but you're pulling out our portion.
And you know, as we focus, focus on these activities. I'm not pointing out any specific employees, you know? I mean, everybody's going to get, feel some pain somewhere along the line. And I don't want to think that there's any one department, and it's not my place or our place right now, to say that this department is not worthwhile. Because that's not what we're talking about here. And I don't want to, as I go down a list, we're going to be pointing out people that are sitting in, on, looking at YouTube right now and saying, hey, he's talking about my job. No, we're talking about just general services that should be looked at by the next, by the next board. So I'm not pointing out any particular person or personnel here at the county. Yes, Commissioner Deroche.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian's brought up a good point. How many services do we have that are grant funded? And how many positions they hold? And how many of those would we lose without matching funds? And I know we've got departments here that are self-funded. We have departments that are partially grant funded. Are all those matching grant? I don't need the answer today. I mean, it's something to look forward or towards in the future. But yeah, it's hard enough that we would trim services back. But if we lose grant funded positions because we don't have matching grant money, for instance, that's going to make it even more difficult. So maybe at our next meeting, we could talk about that in depth. Thank you.
Two of the, a couple of them on my list that I'm looking at for possible savings are going to be probation district court and specialty courts. I mean, specialty courts are a great service. I mean, they're, they've done a lot of good things for people of our county and a lot of that is grant funded. But a lot of it is also funded by the general fund. And those are areas where there's several positions and not mandated. And yet so important to the residents of our county. And if anyone that has gone through one of the specialty courts and has, has overcome horrible difficulties or lives by, by using those courts would disagree greatly that that's anything we should be looking at. But again, I'm throwing out general things and it's my ideas and I hope that you have some. And I hope that the people on the future board are looking into some, some of these too. We have the ability to watch. Pretty on Ways and Means, this committee, we have a pretty good insight about where the monies come from and where they're going. We have a lot of insights about how good some of our programs are. And I think the new board will have to come to speed quickly. And learning about some of those important activities of the county. Commissioner Brailer.
Thank you. It seems to me that for this conversation to be beneficial at all. We have to ask the very basic question is what are we trying to accomplish? If it's just to hit a financial number regardless, okay. But I think we have to keep in mind that we are basically talking to two separate constituencies. Both of whom are probably very interested in what we do next. The first is of course, the people who live in Eaton County and pay the, the taxes that come to us. But the second constituency are the employees that work here. Those two constituencies may coincide in terms of some of the concerns they have, but they also split. And so I think we, you know, I, I think Terrence's suggestions about going and, and basically rating each positions that comes through in terms of its necessity or importance is a good one. But I think we have to decide, I don't think it simply can be, we have to hit a number. We have to cut eight million dollars out of the twenty five, twenty six budget or whatever. We have to decide, you know, who it is that, in terms of the constituencies that we have. Who, who is, who are we trying to protect? And to a certain extent, I think we want to try and protect both. But I'll give you an example that I think is going to have certain ramifications down the road. Last month, we agreed to use remaining COVID dollars to backfill one of the benefits that the employees have so that their, their costs would not go up. And the amount of money that we used to backfill, I would estimate conservatively is six or seven positions. So at some point down the road, you know, the, the next board is going to have to confront the fact that that money's not available anymore. And so there's probably a reduction that's going to need to come. If we maintain the same level of benefits to our employees. So are we trying to protect as many jobs as we can? Are we trying to, and by doing that, are we trying to continue as many services to the public as we can? I think, as I say, I, I think there's a basic question that really hasn't been discussed at all. And I think it's important, what are we trying to accomplish? I would, and as a suggestion, I understand that there's, you know, you have suggestions as to where people can look to cut. I think the other thing that we need to do, and I have suggested this to some of the other commissioners and to Controller since the election, we need to talk to the state. We're losing by my estimate somewhere between eight and ten million dollars a year in unfunded mandates. And we've paid that price for years and it has cost the county for years. And it will continue to cost the county. And so I think we need to go to the state. I know there was a program in which some other communities were able to access some dollars to apply towards some of those unfunded mandates. But I, you know, quite frankly, you're looking at potential bankruptcy here. You're looking at a potential, whatever they call them, project managers or whatever that merge finance, finance, yeah. And if you get one, if that's what happens in a year from now or a year and a half from now or two years from now, all bets are off. Everything's on the table. That's what we have to have learned from what happened to Detroit. So I think it's important for us to go to the state and tell them we need money. You gave some, you found money for other communities and so it's time. And, and see what we can do for that. Because frankly, even if we could get out from five or six million dollars a year of those unfunded liabilities, those unfunded mandates. We wouldn't be talking here today. We'd all be home, we'd all, the snow would still be on the sidewalks and the streets and we'd all be sitting there waiting until later in the day to shovel out. We'd be having a cup of coffee and relaxing. But we have paid those mandates for a long time and they're costly.
Thank you. Commissioner Pearl Wright.
I might add too, when we talk about the grant funded positions and things. We have to expect that someplace down the road as well, whether it's next, but next year's budget or the budget after or something. That the state was operating a lot of their situations and staffing as well on some of those federal dollars coming through. So if they come to us and they say, we're not filling only half of the grant funded positions across the state or we're not, we're not even going to have this grant any longer. So we're in a state of flux, no matter which way we go, but we're going to have to take care of here. And, but we might be surprised once we take care of here and think that we're doing well. That the state's going to change our direction, whether we like it or not. I, I can see that coming.
Possible. How do you know the future?
You don't.
Another area that I think we're going to look seriously at is of course, our, our largest department is public safety. That's where most of our dollars go. The Delta contract is, is a big contract and is a big part of our, of, of public safety. I think the contract is on the table. Whether we'll renew it or not, it's runs until the end of this, this fiscal, this, this cycle. And whether it be renewed or not, or whether, how it'll be renewed is certainly on the table. And the next board will have to deal with that and work with that. I think it's been beneficial for, for the citizens of the county and longstanding and has not really changed dramatically since I've been on this board, certainly. So that's something that's definitely on the table and we might address that again in the future, near future. Commissioner Augustine.
Just, just to follow up on that Blake too, I think, I think that it, it needs to be talking about contracts. I certainly think that there's negotiations to be had with the Delta contract, with the formulas and things like that. That's going to happen. It happens every time we renew the contract, so that's not unusual. But you know, Delta Township is the only township in the, in the county, save a couple of townships that pay for, you know, one officer or a little bit, that pays a significant amount outside of their general operating millage towards public safety. And quite frankly, you know, we've heard that if we didn't have to quote unquote subsidize the Delta contract, that we wouldn't be in this situation and we would have an easier situation. But I mean, i- if that's called subsidizing, then we're subsidizing the rural out county road patrol as well. By, was it, I mean, seven million, that includes administration and things too, so but probably closer to five million. But if we talked, I think that we need to look at, and I've made this suggestion before, as have others on this board, that we've got to talk to the other townships about some cost sharing and having contracts if they want those services to continue. I mean, quite frankly, you know, Delta Township voted in favor of, of the millage. And so to go to Delta first and say, hey, we're going to save based on our contract, we're, I, I think that's the wrong move. I, that's, and, and the idea that, I, I can't stop getting so frustrated when I hear this idea of the out county versus Delta and how terrible Delta is. If it weren't for the tax base in Delta Township, we, we'd, we'd been having this conversation a long time ago. I mean, the tax base in Delta Township is fixing the roads throughout this county, our road millage. Delta Township, we had a hard time getting Delta Township and on board with this because they were going to be quote unquote subsidizing the rest of the township or the rest of the county. And that's what a county is, you know? The townships work together. We've tried to keep that balance with rural townships and urban townships and trying to work together and, and have, you know, equities, but we don't have equities right now. And I think that that needs to be looked at. I think we have to have those conversations with the other townships throughout the county to say, if you want this, these services, and I'm not just talking about the Sheriff's Department necessarily, but that's a big one, obviously. So we've got to go to them and say, if you want to have these services continue, then we're going to have to work something out. Either you're going to have to pay some money and have a contract out of your general fund or you're going to have to run a public safety millage to allocate dollars to the county. Or, or something has to, or the services aren't going to continue. We're not, we're not going to replace people as, as they, you know, as they turn over. All of our new cadets that we have, you know, in the pipeline may not, may not be out there protecting the people in the out county at all. Not, not just the afternoon shift. So again, we've got to, and we also have to be serious about what we're giving them as far as protection right now too. I mean, we have to, we have to understand that it's been a while since we've had a, a real road patrol in this county. And I think the people in the rural township would agree with that. And I think that came up a lot in our discussions over the millage, which was the concern of, well, we don't really have road patrol right now. So protecting road patrol isn't really protecting anything for us. So it, it really gets down to what the residents want to pay for and what they don't. And I think this election told us that there are certain people throughout the county that don't want to pay more taxes and they would rather have less services. I mean, that has to be my inference because that's what we told them for months. Was that if, you know, the only other option is that they don't believe us and they think that we're all crooks and frauds and lying. And, and I've heard that too, but you know, I, so that's, you know, that's for the next board to figure out. If, if they figure out that, you know, we think, we talk about these positions and what positions are mandated and needed and we feel are important. I mean, I hope that we feel that all of our positions that we have right now are needed and important. Otherwise, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have created them. And I feel confident that, that the board, this board and previous boards through my 12 years have taken that very seriously. And we have not added a ton of positions. Yes, we've added a couple of key positions that I think are, have been extremely valuable and important to the county and should be part of a discussion going forward. But so that's just my follow up on the discussion with the Delta contract. I don't think that we look at the Delta contract in a silo. I mean, you have to look at the, the services that we provide to the other residents of the county as well. So, and we have to get over this idea that, that Delta Township is bringing in a lot of the tax base here in this county. I mean, that's just a reality.
Thirty five percent.
Yeah, we can't pretend that that's not the case. So I mean, you're, you're, you can't just jettison Delta Township and say, okay, you're on your own, Delta Township. I mean, that would be a terrible decision, first of all. So anyways, I, I just want to make sure we're looking at everybody. It, it's been said a couple of times equitably, and I think we do need to look at each township equitably as well. And yeah, if you want to start looking at calls, you know, sure, obviously you're, you're, there's more calls, the more populated, the more densely populated areas, you're going to have more calls. So you know, I, I don't know if you get into that situation where you're charging by the call. I don't know if you can do that, you know? That's the kind of stuff that you, you got to kind of look at. So anyways, that's my two cents on the contract. Anyways, that's my two cents on the contract.
I bring it up as, again, just a talking point and something for the future board to be cognizant of and of not weighing in on benefits or the, or the negative aspects of it.
Commissioner Pearl Wright?
I'm glad Commissioner Augustinstein addressed it from that point of view because I've said all along, if you put something on the Delta ballot, they vote for it. So I've been upfront with some of our Delta electeds, as well as our township supervisor, that I want to know how much we actually are using of the services so that we can stop this. I've been around here since January 2005, and that's what I hear all the time about Delta. But I know that we keep growing and we keep collecting more taxes. And so if we need to relook at that contract line by line, that would be good because if Delta needs to provide some more for what we are using, Delta votes yes. So I've never not said it. I mean, I've had people that voted for the parks. And then they say something like they thought it went to our parks in Delta. I go, "You didn't see any county parks, did you?" I mean, I'm for the parks. I go to Fox, I use Fitzgerald, whatever, so yes, I voted yes. So my point is, if you, if you actually tell Delta what you think and you spread it around equally, like he's saying, if you spread it around equally to all the other townships, I keep, I'll go back to the July Ways and Means meeting when I'm the one who brought it up, that Ingham County, we compare ourselves and our, and our employees go over there, that they have townships that do not have any road patrol because they didn't vote for it back in 2015, 2016, when Sheriff Rigglesworth was there and had to do his department differently with services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie referenced the fact that we had similar difficulties in 2008 and '09. And one of the things that we did try to do at that time was to figure out what was mandated and what wasn't. And what we found is that it wasn't a very satisfactory project because so many of those things were interrelated, that you just couldn't cut one thing as simply all unmandated and easy to go. And so it wasn't, it wasn't a very good exercise. It didn't solve the problem. And I raise that because there's so much interrelationship in a lot of these things that you're talking about. You referenced earlier a suggestion that looking at the contributions we make to outside organizations. And you, you said, and then the two largest that we do are the health, the Board of Health and Community Mental Health. Well, we're in partnerships with Berry County on the Board of Health, and we're in a partnership with Ingham and Clinton County on CEI. And there's a formula in both of those that determines the amount of money that we contribute. And so if we were to unilaterally, and I'm not saying we, we should or we shouldn't, but I think everybody should understand that if we unilaterally say, "Well, we're gonna change what we're giving to these organizations, or maybe we're not gonna give anything at all," those other counties are going to respond in some fashion. So, you know, it, it's interrelated. And we would be basically throwing those formulas out, I suspect. And, you know, the, the consequences of that would be something that I think a board would need to consider, that it's not just us that would be affected at that point.
Absolutely. And I think that's the point that the board has to understand. The public may not know the, isn't into the finer points of some, some of these relationships. And they should, they don't need to be. I mean, we deal with it on a routine basis, and we deal with our, with our, the boards, and we're involved with them. And things function and whether they're, and they have benefit. And I don't think you can just walk up without all the previous knowledge to say, "Hey, it's not needed." That, and any, any action that we have will have counteractions all through the, through our partners.
Well, they could. There are people in Berry County who, and I've been on that board now for a number of years, who have persistently come and suggested that the two counties go their separate ways. That would be extremely expensive. And if we were, as an example, and I have no idea, although I'm pretty sure that the, those people in Berry County would be up in arms, were to decide that we weren't going to follow the formula that we have with Berry County for the Health Board, we could, the consequence down the road could be that the Health Department is split, and it could count, it could cost this county a lot more than it costs it now to go forward. So those are things that have to be taken into consideration.
I don't disagree. Don't disagree at all. Other things on my list, I'm looking at, we might look at junk ordinances and planning and zoning. The portions of the county that rely on our, our services and our expertise may have to do without. I'm not, those are just areas where things could be looked at. And junk ordinances are, I think are, some people don't like them. Some people, you don't like them until your neighbor has a lot of junk, you know? And you're, you're concerned about it. So it's, uh, those are areas that we pay for, and I think the public needs to realize that those are things that may disappear. Looking at buildings, leases. There may be an opportunity or there may be a necessity to sell some of our buildings. That's one, one, one way to go. We have leases that are fair market value, and we may want to raise the leases or dispose of them and look for other, other tenants. Again, the entire, who, who we lease to is essentially nonprofits and the state. And I just throw that out there as things that we're talking of that could be looked at and talked about. How much money they would save. Any of these things that I'm pointing out, that's, hasn't been determined. It's, it all has to go with the, the global, the global perspective of what the county needs to do. So, global meaning all of, all of the funding put together. Financial, global phrase. The county improvement, the capital improvement plan. There's one that we have been coasting on for years and have not done a whole lot to, to improve and fix things. We've, we take care of, when there's a hole in the roof, we patch it. And when, when the sidewalk heaves and it, and it comes up, we grind it. But we have not looked at overall changes to the capital, to the capital assets of the county for, for years, and they're catching up with us. I mean, quite honestly, when an elevator fails, now we're not in ADA compliance anymore, and they're expensive to fix. And maintaining them all along the way is the right way to take care of things, not fix it after it's already broken and it costs exorbitantly more. So we have a capital improvement plan, and we have been very slow in my tenure here on, on, on doing anything except the basics with that. But I throw that out there because there's a lot of money in capital improvements that are necessities. So, I think, I think we can look at options like bonding for some of our infrastructure. I hate to bond. I like using the county's own money and our income, to our revenues, to handle our expenses. And a lot of indebted public entities go to bonding as a way to, to take care of some of their ongoing processes. And I, I think that's a, personally, I feel that's not a good way to go because you're essentially, you know, people, people are more than happy to buy a bond from a county because we have, we have revenues, but...
Well, they are now. I don't know that in a couple of years they will be. And that's the problem, I was gonna say. I mean, bonding might be an option, but it'll be an expensive option if you don't have a sustainable budget. I mean, bond rating's not gonna stay where it is.
And I'm not saying that that's where we should go. I'm throwing out ideas, you know? And a lot of counties and, and cities and municipalities that have gotten into financial difficulty, that's the way they went. And boy, that's a, that's a tough way because you never get out from under, underwater to going in that direction. We've been financially responsible for our years here. This county has, we've, we've pinched every penny. And there aren't positions here or there aren't employees here that, that aren't necessary because we have never been extravagant in this county. That's an absolute fact. And anybody that would doubt that, we're not waste, we're not wasting taxpayer money out there hiring people and providing services that aren't needed or aren't used. So, we can get into some other big things. You know, we've done a great work on our retiree health. We've really, we've really worked on the costs there, and we've, we've lowered the costs, and we've, we've got, that's an area that I, the next board is gonna have to make sure that they take a hard look at. That's their expenses. And there's a lot of trade-offs in that area, and not, not, none of them are good. So I think it has to be one of the things that has to be considered. And I think you've gotta look at the whole idea of what the public wants and where we wanna go, what's important to, to them. So frankly, we as the electeds, and we, we have, we have our, our staff, great people, hard-working people. And they look out for the departments and what they've got in their domain. And we as the electeds look out for the taxpayers and what they're looking for. And it's, there's a natural conflict there. There's a bias on each side. I mean, staff have their priorities, and sometimes taxpayers have another priority. And we have to balance that. And that's a tough job. And there's always, uh, there's always push and pull. So I guess my word to the next board is, it's not gonna be easy, so. Any other comments? Mr. Augustine?
Yeah, I would just, you know, one of the things, and I've been talking about this for quite some time, going back to when we made some changes during COVID. But, you know, we have, the next board has to look at those face-to-face services that we provide. And I'm not, and I've been saying this for years. I'm not suggesting that we stop providing those and require people to do things online and over the phone and things like that. But we have to look at minimizing potentially the opportunity to do those services in person. So obviously, that means potentially closing down the office, the county complex, for half a day, or, you know, be open for four days a week, or, you know, things like that. And I know, you know, you always think that there's lots of savings in that. Obviously, there's nuances to that. You have to pay to have the building maintained anyways. There's all kinds of things. But I think it needs to be looked at if there can be some savings in delivering the services. So if we can continue to deliver services, and this is, again, a part of the analysis when you look at each service, if you can continue to deliver the service but in a different way that still works for the residents, then that's, that's a winner, that reduces costs. If you can do that, then I think we need to look at any of those areas that we can do that. And yes, it may not be the most convenient. I mean, again, this is austerity for not only employees, but also for the residents. I mean, that's unfortunately what happens. And so, you know, if, if we can do what we can to maintain these services for them at a lesser cost, then I think that's something that the next board needs to look at, too. And again, we moved in that direction very rapidly during COVID in a lot of areas. And we've made some improvements in, you know, the building codes department and other areas like that. And I think we just need to really hyper-focus on those areas. Again, that's not gonna save eight million dollars a year, but that's gonna, you know, that's gonna help. You know, and those are the types of things that can help for this budget cycle to keep us in a good position when we get to the end of the, because obviously, you know, a lot of these things that you're talking about will be helpful initially and helpful during this budget cycle. But as we move into the future budget cycles that we are looking at, you know, massive holes, it's gonna take a real structural change outside of additional revenue. That's, that's, there's just, that's the reality of it. So all of these things that we're talking about today will be helpful, can be helpful, and especially during this first year. But moving forward in future years, it's, the board is seriously gonna have to look at structural changes outside of, again, additional revenue.
Yeah, I think that's...
I think that's important for everybody to understand, too.
And I think that's a great point. I mean, everyone says, "Well, close a day." And you're gonna, you're gonna save 20% of your budget, you know? Well, you, no, because you're not gonna, employees are still, are you gonna have everyone work 32 hours a week? No, that's not gonna work. But you can close a day and have services, the public, you know, scale back. And then when the employee is, the employee can still work and do a lot of their work. I mean, there, there's options here, and some of it can be done from home. I, I don't want people to work from home. We generally don't at the county here. That's an advantage we have maybe over the state and the federals, you know? We, our people are all, are here, the ones that are supposed to be here. That's a big difference. Yes, Barbara?
I think that we had a lot of people that were uneducated in this millage. I stressed to my three jurisdictions, but I don't know if those officials stressed to their people the importance of this. I don't think we had support. I think it might not hurt to get them in here for a meeting and let them see what do they want? Do they want any county government at all? That the townships have gotta work with the county because those townships did not carry, because the officials out there did not tell their residents, educate their residents that this was not a want, it was a need. And I think that we should give it another try, and I think we should, as I said, and I'm not gonna be here, but, you know, I've been around and I will come to the meetings, but I think those township people should be educated and those, and, and let them know that, you know, they're not gonna have services from the county. The township people aren't if we don't have the money to operate the county courthouse. And I'm not gonna change my mind.
Jim, or Mr. Chairman?
I just wanna add on to what Terrence was talking about restructuring stuff. And we've had conversations about hours of operation. And no, it's not gonna, it's not gonna save a whole lot of money. But what's gonna happen is that as we reduce staff, and we are already, as everyone knows, as, at a reduced staff, and we've been that way for years, and they've been taking on more workload than neighboring counties with a, with lesser pay. So as that happens, and when the dust settles, we're gonna have to be left with a certain number of staff, and they're gonna be overloaded. So we've had these conversations about what it would look like. And for the, you know, emotional, mental health of the employees that are left, having days off would help them catch up on work that, that needs to be done so they don't have to. We see people coming in and out constantly. So, and, and for some departments, that they're doing that every day, assisting people, and then also have to do the work behind the scenes. So that would help employees catch up on work. Well, how long, you know, that would take and the days off, you know, that's stuff we have to look at. But if, if we don't do something like that, we're still, we're gonna have people leaving just by attrition. They're just gonna get burned out and they're gonna leave. So we've gotta look out after our staff, too. So it's, not every department can take time off. You know, some are 24/7, and they have to be here every day. But for those that we can, we have to look at that. So, and I'm gonna say to the new board, this is gonna take a lot of hours of, of information gathering. So I would just say that, you know, just be aware that you, even on your own, you're gonna have to, to take the initiative to find out and get the information that may not have came, came through a board meeting. And so we can make wise decisions and informed decisions. So.
You know, I would, um, for the new board, our fin, our finance director has put down, given us a lot of information, charts and numbers and where dollars are being spent, where dollars are coming from. We have a lot of that data and it can be kind of dry and it can be kind of, you know, i- it's just numbers. But for anybody the next board and we, we need to delve into some of that stuff because that's where you can see where problems are and where solutions could be. So it's important to look at the numbers. And again, Melissa has made, made those numbers available and she's broken things out into categories that I never had when I was here in my earlier tenure as a, as a commissioner. And I've been able to see things that I hadn't seen because they hadn't been presented the way they are. So I think it's, uh, that'll be a, a good resource for the new commissioners. And I would hope that they'll take the time to dig through that, that stuff. And hopefully be able to use that and get to the heart of our problems and some of the solutions more quickly. Commissioner Brailer?
Thank you. Um. I thought about the idea that, uh, we close, that the county might have to close one or two days. And it occurred to me that you can do that. You can only operate three days a week. I don't think you're going to save a substantial amount of money. Part of the problem is that I, if you were to, let's say you were to close two days a week, so you're only operating on three. If you were to go to the entire staff that's left and say, we're only gonna pay you for 24 hours, you would have no staff at all. So even if you close for one day or two days or half a days or however you were to do that, you're still gonna have to pay the people that you have here 40 hours a week. You're not gonna keep them. But I think additionally, one of the things that has to be considered by the board coming in and by the administration is that we've said from, for the last year and a half, that we have a retention problem. We have a recruitment and retention problem. And that's not going away. So for those that are left, you're going to have to factor in some raises at some point. You're not, I don't think you're gonna, again, you're not gonna keep staff for very long if what you say to them essentially is we're not, we're not going to look at your pay regardless of the outside pressures, inflation, whatever. We can't pay you anymore. This is, this is what it's going to be, period. You're gonna get people who are gonna go somewhere else. Uh, and pretty fast. And the reality is if you factor in, and there's no other new income coming in, if this is all going to be cuts at the end of the day. If you factor in that you're going to have to pay your staff 40 hours a week, uh, regardless of how many hours the place is open or how many times people have to use the internet or whatever. And you're going to factor in the idea that to keep them, to retain them, you're going to have to look at raises at some point. You're going to continually reduce that staff because the cost is going to be positions lost. And that's why I referenced back before the, the idea that in backfilling that benefit to the employees last month, we basically, that cost was six or seven positions. And I do think that when you look at these things, you have to factor in that the increase that you're going to need. But you're gonna have to also factor in what that cost truly is. And in some way relate that to the, to positions. Cause that's really, at the end of the day, the only place you're gonna be able to go. And so if that's the whole idea here, if the whole discussion today is about how do we cut our way into a balanced budget for 25, 26, start equating that positions lost. Cause that's where it is.
Commissioner Pearl Wright?
Well, I know Commissioner Sobey has meetings with, um, other controllers and administrators around the state. And so she's hearing, and I know I'm hearing from being on MAC, HHS, when we do roundtable at the end of our meetings, um, the different difficulties that other counties are having. So I just want everybody to know that is, we're in, in situations, but we're also not alone, which is why we still have to continue to advocate at the state level to give us revenue sharing that's stable. So we know what to plan on. I do wanna mention back when I talked about 2009 and 10, we were part of what Commissioner Brailer brought up. Um, at some of our employee meetings was the rising cost of healthcare that was costing us so much. Cause back then it was going up at double digits. We just got a, got a, um, a quote, well, not a quote, a bill. And we budgeted 7% and at Ways and Means last month, we were told that it went up 18%. So those are the things that we can't control, but we still have to figure out how to pay for it. Now, I'll go back to Delta Township who's trying to build houses as fast as they can. And we're not building anything that's 200,000. So, you know, the taxes, when I build a $500,000 house to start, depending on what you want in it down St. Joe, it's gonna bring in some more revenue, yes. But I don't know that that's all gonna keep up with the cost as we assess and increase property taxes every March. When y'all get your property tax bill and, you know, your assessment. So I don't know, but there's a lot of moving parts in this and we're gonna have to go through it.
There are moving parts and one of the things that we hadn't talked about, and I, it's beyond our control, are some of our, um, long-term pension liabilities. And that's where working with the state and lobbying, you know, there are possible, you know, we've, we've been mandated to pay off our pension in a, in a certain duration, which is unrealistic. We and almost every entity in, in the state. And you know, by, by laying out mandates like that.
Yeah.
You need to be paid in full to this dollar by this date when actually pensions are ongoing. You know, we're continually funding and, and, and people are going on and coming off pensions. And it's unrealistic to think that somehow you're gonna be fully funded by a certain date. And by lobbying our, to change that funding date, only to change that funding date, push it out a couple more years, would do more for this county's financial position than a lot of things we're talking about here. And that's one of the things that by lobbying the state and working with our, our pension providers, that, uh, a lot of change can happen. And I'm not saying that it will, but it's an area that, that we can change our financial situation in a significant way. And again, that's, that's the political side of things that we can do to, uh, better our station and better our status. Mr. Augustine?
Yeah. And, and I think to follow up on that a little bit before I go to my other point, I, I do agree that that needs to happen. And I think, you know, I've heard that the administration is looking at working with other administrators from other counties to collectively do that. And I think that's the best approach. And I think utilizing MAC if you can, um, to help put that together is gonna be the most important thing. Um, or one of the most important things again, in trying to make this happen because it's not gonna change just based on what Eaton County has. And, and this is a problem for every county, every municipality throughout the state. So certainly I think that, but that, that's not gonna happen overnight. And that's gonna be a long-term fix to our, our, our budget issues here. Um, so all these other things that we're talking about and restructuring has to happen because it has to happen quicker. Um, because we can't wait that long. But, um, I, I was gonna go back to your point on working remotely and working from home. I, I kinda have a different take on it. And I know that historically this board and in this county, not this board necessarily, but this county has, has kinda not been a, a huge fan of working remotely. But I do think that is something that it may not be ideal in certain situations, but I do think that every position needs to be looked at because, you know, it's not just, I think it can be a morale thing. I can't, I think it can be a retention thing. I mean, we've done this for the last couple of years, tried to find ways to retain people without money, you know? Or with, you know, small amounts of money, investing into giving them a better quality of work life. And I think that needs to continue, you know, to a certain degree, but obviously you're not gonna have the funds to do that. Um, so you look at other ways to do that. And I think, you know, working remotely is one way to do it. Um, you, you, that helps keep your employees, but it might also save some money on the, you know, on the office side. Cause they have to have an office. They have to have a, you know, workstation. They have to have all these things. Obviously there's additional expenses on the IT side that make up for that. So I'm not suggesting that that might, but I think that's something that needs to be looked at. And I think that, you know, especially as you, if you talk about, you know, selling buildings or, you know, shrinking our physical infrastructure here, especially when, you, you're gonna have to put people in places. And I know obviously the ones where we're leasing to state agencies and, and other things, that, that's not our problem. But, um, so I think that's something else that does need to be reviewed i- i- by the next board. Because I think it can help, uh, in the county situation and, and make it a more attractive place to work and, and give benefits. Because people do, you know, people like working in their pajamas. So, you know, that's where we're at.
I, I do wanna note that when we went through the period of COVID and we did remote work, that is still continued. So we still have employees that are doing remote work. I have two in my office that are completely remote. Um, and if I didn't, um, we wouldn't have an office for one of them. It was gonna be in a closet down by the courts. Um, she wasn't happy about that one. So, um, so we're utilizing that. They're fully remote. Um, you can manage their work, um, on the basis of what they're doing. But other offices are doing it. They're doing it for what Commissioner Augustine said, and that's morale. Um, and giving them time to take a day, work from home, no interruptions. Being able to do their job more productively, less stress, you know, it's output for them. So I, they're utilizing it, but in terms of, you know, taking a whole office, you don't have large offices. State of Michigan has an entire division, right? So they can move everybody remote. What we've found with the state of Michigan, um, is that we'll hear that they can't get to us because they only go into the office once a month to get their messages. It's been interesting for what we've dealt with, with grants. Um, but there's a lot of work that goes on here, um, in person. Obviously we know the courts, prosecutor's office, sheriff's office, any of their admin staff. It's difficult. Other offices up and down the hall, um, here, some can do it, some can't, some are out on the road anyway. But we have been doing that and it has been for morale.
Yeah. And I think it can go along with the idea of closing, you know, maybe we're closed on, on Wednesday and everybody works from home on Wednesday. I mean, not everybody, but everybody who can, obviously. So.
And, and I do appreciate your point. And I'll say it because I know our technology directors here. It is a technology issue.
Sure.
And that is one of the things that, um, Eric has been looking at in terms of the cost of having a, um, doc, like I have a desktop because I'm old school. Um, I have a laptop too, but what I use daily. Um, but Ben is fully remote, right? That's more costly than having a desktop. So for all of your clerical staff, those are the things that Eric's working on evaluating. We have a lot of laptops in the field that he's looking at, do we need those? When we had the power outage, as an example, what we saw, um, is that people went home from here and many worked from home. I mean, my whole office stayed. Um, but some of them went home and didn't work. Do they have a computer? Could they have worked? Those are the things that, that we need to look at. And Mr. Daley is doing that. Eric Daley is doing that. So just want you to know that all of those things are in action on a daily basis by every department. They're working very hard for efficiencies and improving morale and everything.
Well, and I, I do think, I mean, technology's gonna play a huge role in this, you know, in this restructuring effort. And I think that any way we can, and I, you know, I also think, you know, I don't, I don't love the idea of replacing people with, with machines or computers. But, you know, again, if you're talking about trying to preserve the services that we provide our residents, if it's, you know, either we provide the service electronically or we don't provide it at all, I think they'd rather have it provided electronically in most cases. Again, you have to look at the offsetting costs associated with that. But, you know, even things like artificial intelligence, you know, it needs to be looked at. There's a lot of organizations that are utilizing that to answer questions, you know, for, again, if you're closed for a couple of days of during the week, that's a way to get that. And these are, none of these are panaceas or these are not, you know, end all bealls and they're not, I'm not suggesting that that's, this is the way the county goes. But again, the idea today is to, my understanding is to kind of brainstorm. And I think this, you, you gotta look at all areas and, and all creative new ways to try to solve problems. And I think those are potential avenues. So. I'm sure Eric could tell us a lot more about that than I could even tell you in three seconds.
Yeah. Everybody is relying on technology today. I think we sat at the ITCC committee yesterday. Um, Commissioner Drosh just said, we could just take all technology away. You know, go back to paper. I remember printing budget books years ago. Those were the good old days with the carbon paper and we're going back.
You know, when I started on this board and I guess probably under my direction, we got away from a lot of the paper and even the board packets. You know, we had these great big binders full of hundreds and hundreds of pages that somebody, that person doesn't work for us anymore because that was a full-time job, just printing out.
It was me.
Printing out hundreds of pages.
It was me.
For commissioners.
And when there was a jam in that copier, it was a bad day.
Well, and those were the times when, you know, commissioners got their board packet and you, you watch them opening up here the, on board night, you know, the first time they cracked the folder. And you had worked for weeks putting all that stuff together and often wasn't even looked at.
Yeah, that's, that's nice.
Anyway. We're, we're off track.
That, that is, if I can say one thing for my recommendation for the new board and, and when we do orientation, um, with new board members, I've said it to all of you during the budget process, you need to come to us. You gotta ask questions. Chairman Mott said that. Um, we've had, um, department heads, elected officials, commissioners come in and sit down and go through the budget. They've gone through the budget with our finance director. If you have questions, do it. If you wanna see something, go to the chair of Ways and Means, go to the board chair. They can bring it to us and say, this is what you need to present. You need to do that. I speak to any of you that are watching, um, the newly elected. You need to do that because if I'm sitting here at a meeting and we saw this today and it's no offense, but if you ask me to give numbers, you can't expect that I'm just gonna pull it out. I'm not like Joe where he'll just get a number and be right. I wanna give the actual number. Um, so those are the things that I'm gonna be looking for from the new board members. And, and I appreciate it. And I've had some of the new members come in and actually meet with us. So that's encouraging to me. Um, and doing their training with MSU, um, New Commissioner School, it's, it's great. So, um, again, please do that. It's, it's time intensive for us, but it's worth it when we get to a meeting and you ask for something, you need something and we have to do something right away.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, you're absolutely right and that's gonna be so critical. I mean, we all were new board members at one point in time and we all know how long it took to come up to speed with what's going on, what the acronyms mean, everything. So it's gonna be extremely important that the new board members get up to speed as quickly as possible. Uh, my suggestion to leadership and to staff moving forward and doing that is trying to set up workshops and doing it in group settings because the problem that you have is you have 15 commissioners. And if 15 commissioners wanna talk to Connie and Melissa about the budget, uh, that eats up a lot of their time during the week that they need to be looking at, you know, working for the board to come up with solutions and things. So that, that would be my, you know, recommendation. I mean, I think it's, obviously the new commissioners need to get with staff and get up to speed. But if you do it in a group setting, it would be a little bit easier. Plus, when you have the experienced commissioners and the new commissioners together, I think it does add some more value other than just. it does add some more value other than just staff there too. So, but that's just...
I would agree with that. Some workshops, and I think the new, I think the chairman probably agrees, getting people together more often in the next, the next cycle is going to be important because of the financial issues that we're facing. You just can't get into the job in coast because that's not the kind of world that we're going to be in here at the county. We're going to have to have more intense, intensive studying and education for the board members so that they can make decisions and the good decisions in a shorter duration. Commissioner DeRosa?
Can I suggest a break for a few minutes?
I would prefer going to public comment and calling it good. Would you go with that?
Well, I'm going to go down the hall, but I'll be back.
No, I'll, we'll have a break. But when we come back, we're wrapping up here. So, you know, I don't know if there's a lot more we can say. And I will open for public comment when we come back. And...
Ready?
Ready.
Ready. Okay, if we can gather back. This is, uh...any final comments from the board members? Yes, Frank, go ahead.
I was glad to hear people bring up the look to the state level of what they're doing, putting on the county. I guess myself, I'm becoming more aware of what legislation they're working on, especially in this lame duck session. There's some things out there, like the trust fund for revenue sharing. It's a big thing out there. The public audience here has stepped out just before the break, keeps track of legislation and goes to committee meetings at the hearings, I should say, and has input. And I don't know if that's something...somehow we can organize more of an ongoing input into legislation that's going to affect us directly, like say, for instance, that trust fund for the revenue sharing.
Well, and I think that's where our advocates at the Michigan Association of Counties are important. And sometimes they don't run and...they don't work along the same lines as the municipal PACs and the township PACs, like the Township Association. But we share a lot of the same problems when it comes to revenue sharing and mandates. And also in pension liabilities. A lot of townships don't have pensions, but a lot of cities and larger townships, charter townships do. And we share the same problems. And, you know, it's important that our lobbying groups get with their lobbying groups and work communally on our respective...all of our needs. So I am, uh...that's something that we as commissioners can do. We can go back to talking to our lobbying groups and tell them how important this is to us and that it has to take a priority. So, thanks. Any other closing comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Proright.
Just want to let you know that Commissioner Brailer and I are both on the Capital Area Michigan Works Board. Yesterday, we got a letter given to us in our packet, and it's the regional Michigan unemployment rates. And it has some history of other areas, plus Eaton in specific. So it's in your mailbox, and it's two-sided. There's two sheets. And so I thought maybe some of the commissioners would like to see some of the data for Eaton County specific coming in from the state.
Okay, good. Commissioner Brailer?
Thank you. I guess the last thing I would like to say, there are a number of us who are leaving at the end of the month. And some of us have been in substantial leadership positions on this board for quite some time. And a lot of the board members who are coming back have only been here one or two terms. But it's really going to be incumbent on the board members who are coming back to help provide the leadership that is going to be very much needed. And so it's going to be incumbent on those people coming back to step out of the shadows and start assisting in leadership positions. It cannot all fall...and I don't know who the next chair is, although I suspect it'll be Chairman Mott again, and I hope it is, but it cannot all fall on him. Those who have...are going into their second or third or fourth term, who have been able to sit back and kind of absorb what's going on are now going to need to step up and assist Chairman Mott, whether he...in going forward, because it's going to be very much needed. And I hope that you will.
Commissioner Augustine?
Just to piggyback on that, I think, you know, continuing down the example, I think, in the road that this board has set under Jim's leadership of working in a bipartisan way and staying away from political fights and stuff that doesn't matter. You know, we've been through that in my 12 years on this board several times, and it's derailed some serious discussions because it's hard to work with people when you're yelling and screaming at each other about stupid resolutions that mean absolutely nothing to what you're doing. So I've been on the giving end of that and the receiving end of that in this board over the last 12 years. And, you know, those are the things that have bothered me throughout the years, when those types of things have happened. And I know I've had this conversation with Jim throughout the years, too, and I know that it bothers him, too, because it gets in the way of progress and getting things done. And so, again, I encourage the new board members, just like every other political campaign, you know, there were...there was mudslung, you know, there were things done. And I think it's...I don't like that type of campaigning, but it happens. But people need to get over that when they get in this room, and they need to work together because now it's time to govern. And governing is hard. And, you know, coming in with a political agenda is not going to help the county in this situation, talking about, you know, things, again, illegal immigrants and, you know, what guns and all...that doesn't matter right now. The county has serious work to do, and I just encourage the next board to do everything they can to focus on the task at hand and not be distracted by national or state politics. So that would be, as we're encouraging and leaving little droplets of wisdom behind, that would be my wisdom that I would leave for the next board. And obviously, it's up to you guys if you take it. But, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I've been on the board for 16 years, and there just are not any things that were political that we did, other than getting into little food fights now and again with each other. Didn't have any bearing on what we did as a job here as the commission. This is...we work locally. All of our employees work locally with our...and regardless of who our residents' political affiliations, we work for all of them equally. And I think when you get in one of these seats, you learn that pretty fast. And there's no reason to be overtly political because that's not what the job entails. And for all the new commissioners coming in, they just went through a political fistfight, and they're still seeing the world politically. And when they get in that chair where they're...when they sit in one of these chairs, they're going to find out that that's...it's not useful whatsoever because that's not what we are here at the county, and it's not what we do. So, okay. With that, another opportunity for limited public comment. Please limit your time to three minutes.
Rick Jones, Unida Township. Looking over the Unida, tiny, tiny contract, 15 hours a week with the sheriff department, we will pay for overtime wages, benefits, all the vehicle operation costs. I think that's a fair contract. The difference with Delta Township is the county has to actually hire people. It's not just a little overtime here or there. You're actually hiring people with benefits, with retirements. I think in all fairness, Delta should simply pay 100% of the cost. And I think if you look at counties around the state, you'll see that most counties require, if you have a situation like Delta, you pay 100% of the cost plus an administrative fee because you've got all the costs generated, the controller's office, dealing with the unions, all the administrative headaches. I think one of the first things that should happen next year is Delta be advised September of '25 or whenever it is, we're going to have to ask you to pay the cost. I think that's fair. You know, Jim Stewart called me in in 2001. I was on the job a week as sheriff, and he says, "You got to start making cuts. We're having a budget crunch." I says, "What do you need me to cut?" He says, "Cut four deputies." I said, "No, sir, that's not a good idea. You're cutting people that are protecting our citizens." So I cut a lieutenant, and I cut a sergeant, and I went to see Controller Stewart and said, "How many more do you want me to cut?" And he said, "I think that's enough." I drove an old Beater car with 130,000 miles on it. He started me at a lower amount of pay than the sheriff before me, which wasn't legal, but I never argued about it. If I recall correctly, the deputies were paying 14 and 1/2% of their wages into the retirement system, command officers 16 and 1/2. And Mr. Stewart said, "You're going to have to pay 23% if I remember correctly." I never argued. And the sheriff after me took you to court, demanded he get paid what the sheriff before him got, and he won. When it came time to decide what I wanted as a Medicare supplement, I bought one. I didn't take any money from the county for that and take your plan. You have some tough decisions in front of you. But I want to remind you, if there's anybody out there on patrol, they're going to be helping Delta Township. They're going to be helping Lansing. They're going to be helping Shiloh, Eaton Rapids, Potterville, Grand Ledge. So it's not just benefiting the townships that don't have a police force. They benefit everybody. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Dennis Fiedewa. I'm from Delta Township, a much-aligned township in today's discussion. I don't need to remind the board members, you go through the budget every year and how detailed the line items are in those budgets. And it's not just the salaries and wages, it's the benefits, it's the insurances, it's the capital outlay for the...all the required support mechanisms for the deputies that we pay for under contract. And that contract is not just the dollar amount that we pay, which includes administrative costs, by the way, but we do get a credit for the amount of the SEV that Delta Township contributes to the county as a result of the 5 and 1/2 allocated millage, which is 37%. And that's not just for the Delta Patrol. It's for every department within the township. Delta Township provides 37% of the base income revenue for the county. So my point in bringing this out, because you all know that, and a lot of people aren't aware of the details of that, but it's time we get past the finger pointing on that. It's not going to get us anywhere. That we really need to look at this as a community as a whole, a county as a whole, and not try to look at scapegoats. There are maybe opportunities to look at, are there fairer ways, arguably one way or another, in how we fund services throughout the township? Those are all valid arguments that we can make. But to sit there and have a premise that there is a benefactor and one that's being taken advantage of from the beginning is not going to help a healthy discussion to get where we need to go. So I would just encourage the next board to look at it in that light. Thank you.
Morning. Amy Etzel, Court Administrator for the Courts. I just wanted to speak about, in our last Ways and Means meeting with regards to positions, there was discussion about the recommendations for positions that had come open, and those were paused, or I guess tabled, until my understanding this meeting today. And so I know there were some discussions with regards to positions and potential cuts to positions. I can speak for the courts that we have a number of positions that are open in a number of departments. I'll speak specifically to our front of the court. Right now, we have, I believe, five positions that are open. We were able to fill a couple positions, but those were filled internally. And so right now, I don't have anybody as an administrative position in our front of the court. Those two positions are vacant. And so I certainly understand there's the desire to hear from departments about what is the benefit for positions and whether to continue to fill those positions. But there's been a lot of discussion today about a plethora of ideas that could save money. Positions, I understand, are won, but it seems that the decision has been made at this point to start pausing or making it a little more difficult for departments to fill positions that come open. For the courts, we've done, I think, a very good job at looking at our positions, looking at positions that have come open over the last year, anticipating the needs that we are going to have to make potentially in making some cuts. I would just ask that you reconsider the pause on those, filling those positions, allowing us to fill positions as we see fit right now. We've left positions open, anticipating that there is going to be an ask for departments to make some cuts. And so we're, I think strategically, trying to plan what positions that we certainly need to fill. And right now, those positions are crippling departments. I've got people who are working...obviously, the people who got promotions are still doing their old jobs because we don't have people to fill those. So I'd ask that the board, at least the committee, consider allowing departments, when those positions come open, that we could simply fill those. It's been a month, and so our people are hurting. I also understand that I have a lot of employees who are watching this meeting today, anticipating maybe some answers. And whereas a lot of ideas were thrown out there, just to make sure that you understand, employees are anticipating cuts. Employees are asking whether they're going to lose their jobs and just looking for some direction. And as much as there's so many of ideas that are out there, I'm not yet hearing a direction for departments to say, "Here's what you need to do. Here's the amount that we need to, you know, to get from you. This is what you need to look at." The courts are looking at all ideas, not just personnel, our technology that we use, contracts that we have, are there things that can be done? So...but I wanted to speak with regards to the positions because that's a huge impact for us right now that we're hurting. So, thank you.